We'll come to order.
Yeah.
Okay, to answer the question that was presented was, and I, and we have the exact number, $375,034 is what we are over our levy limit max right now. Excuse me. Oh, is what could be additionally reduced and still leave us at levy limit max. That is what was being serviced now with debt levy, and that's what could be moved into operations should this board choose to. Mr. Boradzis. Shafinsky now is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that knowledge in hand, now, let me ask where we are in the process. Do we have any other amendments on the floor? I don't believe so.
We do not.
Okay. With that in mind, I would like to move that we consider Amendment 17. And that is regarding the demolition of the property at 1212 West Street.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Seventeen is the demolition, and before we get to a second, I'll provide a little bit of context to that, this, and where this came. This is a CIP project, first off. It is a building that the Marathon County government owns that is over on West Street. It's next to our highway shop. That building is a building that we acquired after it had a fire. That building, the city of Wausau has been very patient with us. First off, they've had some challenges with the prior owner in, after the fire, in trying to get that building cleaned up. The, then the county owned it, and the city of Wausau has been very patient with the county in not issuing a raise order, and that raise order would require cleanup and a demolition of the residual structure that is there. That raise order, as I understand it, could be as short as 30 days or as long as 90 days. If the county did not comply with the raise order, then the city could choose to seek court, court sanctions against the county and could require, and ask the court to be able to allow them to go out and raise the building and send us the bill. This cost is with the use of, currently with county highway department workers and equipment to do portions of this cleanup, and so, and, and raising of that building. So I just want everyone to have all the information that is relevant to this capital project, that if we choose to vote this down, the city of Wausau has also told us in an email directly that they were going to watch this, the process, and they, because they are not, they've been very patient with us as far as cleaning up that property. So is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? Supervisor Sandalski is seconding the motion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
I recognize, you made the motion, I asked for a second, I'm moving on to the next. Supervisor Dickinson is next, is recognized next to speak.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, that was for another matter.
Hey, I'll go to the next, and that would be supervisor. Supervisor Robinson.
I'd just like to reiterate the chair's comments that we are, we are momentarily, or moments away from probably getting that raise order. And if we, you know, the proposal is to have our staff do it with, in or force account labor, so I think we have an obligation to the neighborhood. If this facility was in your neighborhood, you would want it raised. We, we, it's been five years since the fire, there is a need to take that building down. And I don't think it's discretionary. I think it's a, something that either you're going to budget for, or you're going to find a way to budget for it later, so it's not one of those discretionary items.
Supervisor Hardinger, then, unfortunately, part of the queue is lost, but is being kept tracked of. Supervisor Hardinger is next, then Jean, then Boots.
I mean, you can, and like, I'd be happy to do that, but I need to do it on my work phone.
Oh, please, please mute.
Are you okay?
Please mute your phone. You're coming through on the discussion. Supervisor Hardinger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Considering the conditions behind this, I'm going to be voting for it. I'm sorry. Against the amendment. Thank you.
It's already getting late, and we got a ways to go yet. Supervisor Jean.
Sorry, I meant to cancel my, my request to speak.
Supervisor Boots.
So I'm not going to call a question. See, I scared everybody there, didn't I? As far as respectful, I guess that's where I have a little difference of opinion. I feel respectful as we've discussed this over and over and over again. And the reason I call the question is there's, we don't respect the standing committee level. We really don't, and that's, doesn't work real well with a 38-member board. Some of the things that are happening tonight, I think are good and bad. I'm not going to say what I think is good and bad, but I will not be calling the question anymore, but please be mindful that we've discussed this. Let's vote on them. Bring your amendments forward. I don't need to hear the nine people talk on the same subject I heard them talk about yesterday. Thank you.
Supervisor Van Cray.
Well, that's kind of hard to follow, but I just want to make a point that I am a strong believer in being respectful to other governing, governing bodies, other municipalities, and we need to be good community partners. If the city of Wausau has been gracious enough to be patient with us, we should respect that, and we should get on with demolishing this building. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Go ahead.
Called the question.
Supervisor Lamont has called the question. Is there any debate, or is there, is there any objection to question being called? Any objection? Seeing no objection, we will proceed with whoever is left in the queue, and then we will proceed to still vote on question being called. Supervisor Seibert.
Can we have an explanation how that works with the county highway department's budget? They bill us, the county bills us, and we pay them, and how does it affect their budget? And is it included in their budget already?
I'll look to the administrator. First off, first off, the highway department is significantly funded and reimbursed for its operational costs when it's working on highways by the state. And so that's why they're requiring a fee back and forth to, from the county to deliver those services and modifications. Chris, please. Deputy Administrator will address the question.
Specifically to the role of the highway department, I think that it would most likely be limited, because there's certain things they wouldn't be able to do, but for any services we could do in-house, it'd be sort of like aligning departmental services so that you're spending the money you have within departments twice, in a sense. So there's that benefit. The other benefit would be that we would have more of a say and control over the process versus someone else issuing the raise order and then more or less dictating the process, and then we pay the bill for whatever that cost is. The, the project itself had a quote from PGA. We go out to firms like PGA and engineering firms to get an educated sort of quote and guess, and they don't have to do that for us, but when we reach out to them, they're generally very friendly in terms of going out and assessing the project, the scope, everything that would be involved, and so the overall amount of that cost is driven by that, but ultimately, the work would still get bid out, just like any other project would. So the role of highway, if there was one, is still undetermined, but if they were to, say, haul things away, then whatever that would be, would be handled internally within the county's budget, because again, you're using, you're using, you're kind of helping each other out. It'd be the same way if facilities helped repair their HVAC system down there. You know, your, the money's circulating within the county, and there's a balance to strike there, too, like looking ahead, the more we can align, the better, but you also want to be sensitive of the fact that you want to have a positive relationship with vendors out in the world, because if you go out to bid for things, you want them to bid, and so I'm not sure if that's answering all of your question, but that's kind of the general look at it from.
Well, the county doesn't have the whole project. How much of the project is bid out?
None of the, none of the project is bid out at this point. This is an estimate. Again, this is, again, this is budgeting for the, for what, we estimated the project to cost based on the information that was provided us by someone that is experienced in this kind of work.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, question's been called. There was no objection. We'll proceed to vote. All those voting in the affirmative, again, two-thirds majority required. That will end debate on this amendment. And we'll proceed, and the motion is carried, and debate is ended. We are now to the point of voting on the amendment. A vote yes will remove the project from the capital improvement plan. A no vote will leave it in and allow the project to go forward. Again, it is an estimate for the amount of the project. It will be bid through the regular process, just like any other project that we have. So again, a yes vote will remove the project, and then we might be, we would be subject potentially to a raise order from the city of Wausau, and at, at potentially their cost and their timeline, their, so we'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Anger, please vote. And we'll proceed, and the vote is no, and the amendment is defeated. And we'll proceed onwards. Any additional discussion? I think Supervisor Dickinson, you were in the queue, and then it got deleted when we moved back. Are you requesting to speak? Okay, so please, Supervisor Dickens is recognized to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologize for pushing the buttons in the wrong way. What I would like to do is make a motion to reconsider the Fourth Amendment, which was the nurse-family partnership.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Vice Chair McEwen. Any discussion on the motion to reconsider? It is debatable. Supervisor Dickinson.
I just wanted to explain why I'm making the motion to reconsider. Supervisor Marshall, who had brought forth the amendment, was attempting to make an amendment to her amendment with dollar values, and I think that is important for us to consider, to give her that opportunity. So that's one, and then the other is, I believe there was one member who pushed the wrong button on their vote. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? The motion to reconsider, Supervisor Lamont.
Wasn't that Amendment 11, not four?
It was, it, well, we have two different numbering systems. It's number four on the clerk's machine, but it is number 11 in the packet from the HR Finance Committee, so it is number 11, correct?
Thank you.
It's the current number four on the system that we are tonight, but it is number 11, again, in the HR Finance Committee packet. Is there any other discussion? So let's be clear how this works. A motion to reconsider can be brought. It can be brought by a successful voting person who was successful in making the original motion. In doing so, what it will do is it will bring us back, if you vote in favor of the motion to reconsider, it will bring us back to where we were just prior to voting on the motion. So we will be back to the original amendment of number 11, as it was printed at the 620, yeah, where did I get to the number? 621-507. That's where we will be. If we vote, if you vote yes, it is a simple majority to get back to there, and a vote no will keep us where we currently are at. So again, if you wish to provide an opportunity, as Supervisor Dickinson suggested, to Supervisor Marshall to make the amendment, that would, that would allow her that time. Any further discussion? Supervisor Jean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you clarify whether it would be a two-thirds vote in order to reconsider?
It is a simple majority vote to reconsider.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, we will, is everybody clear what we're voting on? We're voting on only to reconsider the motion, and we will, that will put us back at where we were on Amendment 11 in its entirety. Okay? We will proceed. All those, well, proceed to vote. And we'll proceed, and the motion to reconsider is approved. We are now back at Amendment number 11, as it's presented in the packet. 621-507 was the total expense reduction, and that had a 600, or has an impact on the tax levy. So further discussion? Supervisor Dickinson?
Mr. Chair, I support her amendment. If, you know, would, oh. There hasn't been an amendment. I'm going to back away. Thank you.
Okay. Amendment 11 is on the floor, as it states. That was, it's back to when it was corrected. Sorry, we do need to do the paperwork. So we are now back at a position where Amendment 11 is on the floor, ready to be debate, is still debated, and I will recognize Supervisor Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we've got a motion and a second, and that was, that was the reconsideration, excuse me.
I think we're.
Marshall and Lemmer, so Supervisor Marshall, please.
The amendment would be to reduce $140,000 in the contractual services line, and secondly, it would reduce the total revenue in the property tax levy line. So rather than 621,000, it would be reducing 140,000.
And the 140 would be in which, which two lines? Do we have specific numbers for those two lines?
101, 323, 920, 2997.
Yep. And that will be to 140, and zeroing out the other lines?
Yes.
Thank you. And then that will, and on the?
Would take out the property tax levy line by 140.
Okay, reduce the property tax levy line by 140, bringing it down to 226,306.
Correct.
Okay. Just so we're clear, Supervisor Lemmer is next.
I want to think.
Nope.
Sorry. That was a motion to amend the amendment. There would need to be a second.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment to the amendment?
I gave it to someone so that I could enter the amendment.
Okay. Who wishes to make the amendment to the, or second the amendment? Supervisor Seibert is recognized as making the second to the amendment to the amendment, and so now there's debate, and we will start, Supervisor Marshall was first. Supervisor Lemmer is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm a little confused, but I just want to say I appreciate this being brought back for consideration. I know it's important for us to pay attention to the bottom line, but when we're paying attention to the bottom line and looking at it just with dollar signs, I think we forget the people, and I really want the people to be looked at who will benefit from this service, so, and it's not just the moms and their babies that are going to be born, but it's the workers who are there. So this is an important project for the Health Department. It's important for our county, and I appreciate this being brought forward. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Dickinson, or, excuse me, Hardinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you guys working the numbers and getting that back to us, and I appreciate Supervisor Dickinson bringing this back to us, but as I understand this program, the money that's been requested for it, if it's cut any, in any shape or form, the program cannot continue one way or another, so it'd have to go back out to RFP. So I'm asking for a clarification. If it is reduced, the program as it is would have to be scrapped and reevaluated or re-RFPed. Is that correct?
I would allow the Administrator to answer.
I don't know that my answer is going to be helpful. I don't know, but staff will go back and look at that, what the impact is. I will tell you, just looking at this logically, the difference between a $621,000 cut to a line item allocation versus a cut to of $140,000, our response may be different. Our ability to deliver the service, and perhaps, as was referenced, relative to the startup costs, the savings in year two are anticipated to be significantly more. I, I don't know what that impact is going to be. We'll have to evaluate that. But again, your budget is a planning document. There is nothing stopping you from, if you allocate funds, and we do come back to you and say, there is an impact, or this is less money. If it's less money for a levy program, as Chair Gibbs referenced, it rolls over, and the year following the audit into capital improvements, but to your specific question, I, I don't know what the impact is going to be.
So if we're cutting this by 100, thank you, Administrator. So if we're cutting this by 140,000, or cutting it, reducing it 140,000 from the original number, we don't know whether or not we can even still do the program. Is that correct?
I don't know if it would be done in the same way. We would talk about what that service, those service level implications would be, but as I understand the direction of the board, if you were to move forward with this amendment, you still would like the overall program of nurse home visiting to move forward. Staff's job is to select the model and to determine how best to do that as efficiently and effectively as possible. We would evaluate that specific question, and we would evaluate whether or not we could do it in accordance with the plan that we had developed and presented to the Board of Health and Health and Human Services, using the nurse-family partnership. I will tell you, we will bring back whatever the information is, what we find, through that evaluation, but today, off the top of my head, and without the health officer sitting here talking to each of us about what that might look like, I don't want to give you information and be incorrect, but we would evaluate what those implications would be, and we'd come back and tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Supervisor Van Cray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a clarifying question. So this is an amendment to the amendment, which we would vote on, and then we would vote on the amendment as amended?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And, and just if it's not obvious, I don't support any cuts to this program. Thank you.
Like to call a question. Is there any objection to question being called? Any objection to question being called? Seeing there's no objection to question being called, we will proceed with the remaining two speakers in the queue, and that is Supervisor Lamont is next, and then Supervisor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Am I on?
You are on. Go ahead, Supervisor Lamont.
Just to clarify again, so if this amendment to the amendment fails, do we even vote on the amendment again because it's been passed?
Yes, we do. We go back to, again, it's like the other vote never took place, and when the motion to reconsider passed, we are put in a position that is right prior to any vote taking place, and so the amendment is on the floor with the 621-507, and now we are talking about an amendment to the amendment which would reduce that 621 to 140.
And then my second question is, why was the number 140 chosen?
I, that I would have to ask the maker of the motion.
Can I ask that?
I will, I will relay the question to the maker of the motion. Supervisor Marshall?
Like I said, it was in a spirit of compromise that while the program was expensive for the number of people served, I felt that it was perhaps a too deep of a cut, because I would like to give the organization time to make some changes. Again, we're kind of running into several times where we're suggesting changes to the budget, and they're saying it's too late. So this is a spirit of compromise, and to make that change smaller. Thank you.
Okay, so again, Supervisor, Supervisor Baker.
So I just, I am a little confused. Are we going from 640 to 500? Are we going from 640 to 140?
My understanding is from 621-507 to 140.
Yes, that's correct.
And as I understand the motion, the amendment is to specifically decrease on, if you look at the resolution, or the amendment, line 101, 323, 920, 2997, which is subcontracting, reducing that to 140. All lines above that will be zero. The total expense reduction will be the 140, and all the lines below will be the 140 in property tax levy. Maybe I misspoke.
I just want to make clear, so because you're bringing it back, it's like the 621 never happened.
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct.
So then it's back at the full...
Well, it's back originally the 840, and the amendment is trying to... or is reducing the... all of the line items that made up the 621 down to only $140,000 reduction.
Right. So what the only... the impact would be is that contractual services would be lower by 140?
Correct.
And levy will be lower by 140?
Correct.
Okay. I wrote it down right. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Question has been called, okay? Again, we are voting on the question. Again, just to end debate, and two-thirds majority required. A yes vote ends debate with two-thirds majority. Let's proceed to vote. And we'll proceed. And debate is ended, and we are now voting on the amendment to the amendment only. Again, we're voting on changing, instead of 621, bringing in a $140,000 reduction only in subcontract, and $140,000 reduction in property tax levy. That's the motion of the amendment to the amendment. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on?
Could you clarify each line on that chart? What new dollar amount will be?
Sure.
Thank you.
Line 101, 318, 910, personal services will be zero. Line 101, 318, 920, contractual services will be zero. 101, 318, 930, supplies and expenses will be zero. Item 101, 323, 910, personal services will be zero. 101, 323, 920, 2997, subcontract will be 140 for a total expense of 140 reduction. On the following lines below, the reversing entry is a $140 adjustment to property tax levy. All other lines will be zero. Is everybody clear? Is anybody not clear on what the amendment now is that we are voting on? Okay. We will proceed to vote. Supervisor Marash and Supervisor Unger, please. Yes means you support the amendment to the amendment, moving it down to the 140 reduction instead of the 621 reduction. We will proceed. And the motion is carried. So the amendment now, that is before you, is now only what you just amended. So now, the original amendment number 11 does not exist. The thing that you're now voting on is the amendment that was just... You're voting on the amendment twice, effectively. So is there any discussion? Supervisor Lamont? Supervisor Lamont?
Call the question.
Is there any objection to question being called?
Can you clarify with the amendment to the amendment?
So now, we are... Well, you've already amended the amendment. And so what you are now voting on is the 140 in line item 101, 323, 920, 2997 subcontracting. That will be 140,000. And the property tax levy decrease will be the reversing line, $140,000 decrease. Is there... But first, question's been called. Is there any objection to question being called? Seeing no objection and no one was in the queue, we'll proceed to vote on the question being called. And the clerk needs to record the motion. Okay. This is... The vote that you are about to take is a motion on ending debate. That's all you're voting on right now, is to end debate. We'll proceed. And the motion is carried. And now we are at a point where a yes vote will have this adjustment to the budget. Instead of amendment number 11, which adjusted the budget by $621,507 to the nurse-family program, this effect of a yes vote will reduce that to only $140,000. And the offset is property tax operational levy will be reduced by 140,000, which effectively is very close to one penny on the tax levy rate. Is everybody clear on what they're voting on? A yes vote puts into the budget $140,000 amendment. A no vote would defeat any amendment. Everybody clear? All right. We'll proceed to vote. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. Now we are back to the tax levy as currently amended, which now has added some additional dollar to the tax levy number that I gave you folks before. Supervisor Ritter?
Call the question.
Question's been called. Is there any objection to question being called? Supervisor Baker is objecting. Is there a second to question? Second has been... A seconded by Supervisor Rosenberg. There was no one in the debate... or in the queue, and so we will proceed again to vote on question being called. And a yes vote will end debate on the property tax levy rate resolution and set the budget. And a no vote will continue the debate on the tax levy resolution. Is everybody clear? Again, all of the amendments that have been up to this date now are included in the motion. So it's included in the tax levy. Is everybody clear? Again, this ends debate. A yes vote ends debate with two-thirds majority, and no vote continues debate. Are we ready to vote? Supervisor Lamont, you had a question?
Yeah, I had objected too, but I was on mute.
Okay. Well, objection's already been made, so we're already... And we've received a second, and we're proceeding to vote after the second has been made. There was no one else in the queue. So we will proceed to vote on the motion to end debate. A yes ends debate with two-thirds majority. Supervisor Lamont, I can't... Your vote hasn't been recorded. You're trying to get back online, I'm assuming?
Yep.
There we go. Thank you. We've got your vote recorded. And the question is not passed. We need 25 to end debate on the main motion, so we are back at discussion. What is your pleasure? Supervisor Dickinson. Don't... Please, 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 from now on, do not hit motion because that screws up the system. Request to speak, and then you will be recognized, and then you can make your motion. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I would... So you're asking... So if I want to make a motion, are you asking that I make a motion right now?
Correct. If that's what your wishes are.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion on the amendment six, which is the library.
Okay. Item from the packet was item... was amendment number six, which requests a $365,000 reduction in the library budget. Is there a second? And please don't push second. Just raise your hand and say, "I second the motion." Second by Supervisor Sandalsky. Now we will enter debate. And please push request to speak if you want to speak to the motion. You're going to have to wait, though, until we get... The clerk gets it in. She does have to type a lot of this in. We didn't have a lot of this pre-typed in because we didn't know how many and which amendments and what order they were going to come in. And so I apologize to the Board, but we will have an accurate record of everything that took place. Whoever's on the phone, please put your phone on mute. You're coming through. We're hearing your conversation. Now you can request to speak, please. Supervisor Boots.
I would just say again, to reiterate respect, that we've listened to both sides of this issue on the library. I don't think we need to hash it out again. We all have our thoughts on what we want to do with the library, so could we please limit the discussion?
Supervisor Dickinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am just... I am going to simply read what I read yesterday. I apologize if that continues this, but I think it's the most efficient way for me to make the comment for those who did not listen. I think it's important to do it. I'm proposing a $365,000 reduction to the 23 library budget. The resolution focuses on some facts. One, that the library has significantly overbudgeted over the past several years. Two, there is the library's response to the controversy and with books. And third is the response... our responsibility as a board to handle the library budget. The library budget continues to be too high. In reviewing the past five financial reports, the library's taken from their board meeting packets, the library consistently has significant unobligated funds at year-end. This means expenses came in lower than budgeted. This amount has been as low as $90,000 and as high as $540,000. The result of that is an amount that the Administrator recognizes at about $719,000 at the end of this year. Looking forward to 2023, the library has increased its budget, and that is the highest of the previous five years. Coming in under budget can be positive, and having savings can be positive. It's inconceivable that year over year, the library would be that far off. We have... The Administrator acknowledges the problem. He addresses it in his budget by... Under mitigating future financial risk, he states he's reducing the library budget in 2023 by $350,000. For this reason, he believes the library can manage their budget effectively. And then in '23, the library director is tasked with developing the capital plan. On page 14, the Administrator explains the target of his reduction in the personnel budget and states he believes the library will use reserve funds as necessary. My proposed budget is not... My proposed reduction is not directed toward one expense. I applied it to all four. This way, the library can make the decisions across all categories, and if they choose not to do so, it is my intent they can use cash reserve in the same way as the Administrator proposes for his reduction. It is important to note, the overbudgeting issue itself is not enough, in my opinion, to satisfy my amendment. However, my responsibility to the citizens of this county, those who have taken the time to speak up, including those in my district, and to my own duty and standing that I address the controversy surrounding the sexually explicit books within the library and a lack of a resolution at this point. As I explained yesterday, in September, dozens of citizens went to the library board to complain about books in the library that they felt were obscene and vulgar. Unfortunately, they were given only 10 minutes to share their concerns. They could have been more... Given more due to the nature of the topic and number of persons there. Those people felt ignored and unwelcome. Directed to fill out the complaint form, some of those persons did at that time. Some did it at a later time. Some of those persons are awaiting follow-up. It would have been... I would have hoped it would have been more efficient. I am not commenting on their policy or criticizing them in that regard, but just making the general comment. I did reach out on October 17th at the library board meeting. I spoke at public comment and made comments that the board would be voting on the budget November 10th, and I hope that this would not affect their vote... affect the vote. But if they could come and give us some information and give us an update, that would be important. I did not receive an update, and therefore I emailed the library board president on October 27th. I will comment that I did not receive a response until November 7th, this past Monday. However, I have later learned the president's email had an issue which delayed her response, and so I appreciate her letting me know that that was the problem there. So I do want to clarify on that. The library director has indicated that a meeting is scheduled for November 28th. And for informational purposes only, the library board does have a policy, 1306 and a rule 1307, stating how they are to review these books. And so I would only hope that they would follow that. I am not sure if they have completely, but I think it is something to consider if the board is not kind of following through on that for these citizens. As an update, Mr. Raome responded by email to the board. I appreciate his clarifications. I believe he was here. I don't know if he's still here. My position stands, however, namely that the perception by the public and some supervisors is that the process is dragged along. One reason is a lack of updates on the review process to the people who have committed the reviews to them. Additionally, the issue of delays of getting these books into the hands of committee members could have been resolved simply by using eBooks. I know Mr. Raome said that he had purchased some books and is having a hard time tracking down those materials, but I would make that comment. So I hope my public comment would have kind of been addressed for us to have some sort of resolution before our vote. And I reiterate that because it's... This is one of the powers that we have as a board, is about how do we handle the budget in regard to... How do we handle a library in regard to the budget? However, none of this, the budget or the process in this case, or lack of a resolution to this point, addresses really the books themselves, which I do think is important. And I'll read again what I said last night. While these books in question are not supposedly considered pornography, because if they were, we could not legally have them in the library system, is what I'm told, many of them do contain pornographic or sexually explicit images, graphic illustrations, and text, stories of sexual discovery and abuse, hints of pedophilia, vulgar and obscene language and dialogue. Because of the graphic novel style, many of them seem geared towards teens and children. I will state that none of the books I am referencing have anything to do with sexual education or health. I would also note that there were some books in the email that we received. Not all the books that I am talking about were included in that. And I'm not necessarily talking about the books that were in the email, but there are books that have these things that we need to be aware of. I think it's important that we consider that if these books were movies, they'd be rated R, possibly NC-17, restricted, or not suitable for children. If these books were video games, they would be rated mature 17-plus or adults-only 18-plus for having sexual content and strong language. Sexual acts and imagery... Sexual acts and imagery in any context, even in one scene, would cause that movie or video game to be labeled and restricted. In my opinion, it is fair to ask why such restrictions do not also apply to the books? Why does the library choose to allow the books and not filter them out? Understand that each day, or each week, or each month, a library is actively making decisions on the books and materials they choose to make part of the collection. They are deciding to let these books in. Likewise, each and every time, they are in fact not choosing other books for some other criteria. Books that could be award-winning and bestsellers, is that considered banning books? Is that considered censorship? Is that considered some religious ideology? They are making these decisions. So people are looking to be heard. They're asking the library to do a better job at keeping harmful books out. While moving a book may seem okay in another part, or leaving it out, or, excuse me, I'll go back. While moving a book may seem okay to another part of the library, the book is still there, and the library confirms that anyone can go into any place in the library and take that book out, or read that book in the library. They do not have restrictions. So we are asking, or they are asking, the library to do its part as an important part of our community to protect children and adults from the harmful effects of this imagery. Our state statutes do that. Our Marathon County Code does that. Our Sheriff's Department, Health Department, and Social Services Department are all intended to protect children. I would, I would be remiss to not ask if the library considers the protection of our children in the same manner. So really, that's all I have to say. The most important thing, I will say this to finish up. I appreciate the email. I appreciate the conversation I had yesterday with Sharon and Reed. I am not looking to destroy the library. I'm not looking for branches to close. I do think, given the budget, we have to reconsider the amount of money we're giving them based upon their budgeting strategy. And I do think we also have a responsibility to our citizens to talk to the library in this manner, to do something about where we are with this. I certainly appreciate, and I had a conversation with Supervisor Van Cray today. I do appreciate the effort of the library to address it with the review on the 28th. I wish it would have been sooner. And with the new leadership in the library that we have, with Director Giordano, I am hopeful and excited to see them moving forward with a better budgeting plan next year. Thank you.
Vice Chair McEwen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would this be the time if I wanted to make an amendment to this amendment, proposed amendment?
This would be in order.
Thank you. First of all, I agree with 100% of what Supervisor Dickinson just expressed. However, what I'm trying to accomplish is not to penalize the library or close the library, because I think it's a very important institution for our entire county. So with that being said, I'm not going to repeat everything that Supervisor Dickinson did, but my proposed decrease would be a total of $69,000. Okay, so looking at his, at the amendment here, I guess, number one, the decrease would be a total of $69,000. Two would be zero. Three would be zero. And four would be zero, which would be the total amount of $69,000. I think with what Supervisor Dickinson came up with their budgeting, I don't believe that the $69,000 is going to impact the library, where they're going to have to start closing satellite areas, which I do not want to see. However, I do believe that Marathon County Board needs to work more closely with the library board, so we don't get into issues like this again. So that would be my proposal.
Is there a second to the amendment to the amendment? The second is seconded by Supervisor Mask. Any discussion on the amendment? Now we are discussing the amendment to the amendment, and that is offered, if you look at the amendment number six, that was in the Finance and Property Committee's packet. Item number one, after it now therefore be it resolved, is decreasing expenditure in the 2023 budget by $69,000. All the remainders will be zero. And Supervisor Langhan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize. My extension cord or charger cord is not long enough to reach that outlet, so I'm kind of working in between back and forth right here with the wall. I did not mean to second that motion. I wanted to request to speak, so I just want to confirm, as opposed to what it says on the app right now, that it was motion by McEwen and then seconded by Mask to make that.
That's what we have on the screen up here.
Okay, sorry. My screen says something different. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So Supervisor Langhan's request to speak, that's where we're at.
Thank you. I guess that app does work sometimes. I guess my question would be, as far as the original intent behind that reserve that the library has, was that with a reserve, if there was a catastrophic incident, an emergency, that the library would have to address something, that they could rely on that contingency in order to address that? That would be my first question to, I'm guessing, the administrator, if you could refer that to him.
I'll refer to the administrator.
I don't know that I'm the best person to answer it, but my understanding of how that fund has been used in the past, because I don't directly supervise the library director, I don't, that's the responsibility of the library board, as state statute has that distinction. But my understanding of what that reserve has been used for in the past is that it's a small capital reserve, so the explanation I've given in the past, and I think I gave it yesterday, was if you think about capital projects in terms of, you know, the general description, that if you take a building and you flip it upside down and shake it, small capital is the stuff that falls out, and large capital is the stuff that doesn't. So your large HVAC, your drywall building renovations, that's large capital projects. The library's fund has been used for small capital projects, such as shelving, carpeting replacement that they've done. I don't know Supervisor Van Cray with the library board, if you have anything else, but generally speaking, it's those small pieces. IT replacements, computer replacements, they have a lot of IT terminals that are open to the public. Those sort of things would constitute small capital, and that's very consistent with how the county uses and how the county defines small capital.
So then a follow-up to that, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So reduction in that amount then could affect the long-term capital planning for the library then?
You know, I hesitate to guess on that. I'm sure it would, I'm sure it would impact the long-term capital plan, but I will say what I, and just to echo what Supervisor Dickinson referenced, and it's in the budget message, one of my requests of the library director was to work to develop that five-year capital plan and have us incorporate, much like we do for the solid waste department and Central Wisconsin Airport, despite the fact there's independent funding for their capital projects, that we nevertheless incorporate those capital projects into our reporting through the budget book and the capital improvement plan that you have within that budget message in the last two pages. And simply note that if they were going to do a project, that they would put it in that capital improvement plan to enhance transparency, because as I referenced yesterday, that reserve, there hasn't been clarity around what it has historically been used for, what the intent was, which for those of you on the board, you'll recall that with respect to the library roof, there was debate. Well, the library's got the reserve fund, why don't they fix the roof? Or, and the response to that, of course, logical response, I'm not saying it's my response, but the logical response is, well, that's a large capital expense. It's the county's responsibility to maintain the building. They should fund it. So the library director is working on and has made progress on defining what that policy for their reserve usage is, and she's working, as I understand it, with her staff to develop that five-year capital plan in 2023. And I would defer certainly to Supervisor Van Cray and other members from this body that are on the library board, because I don't attend all the library board meetings.
And one final point, Mr. Chair. Go ahead. I share many of the same concerns that Supervisor McEwen and Supervisor Dickinson have about those books, but I do want to add that there's a right tool for every project, and I feel like we need to see that process played out and completed before we start talking about funding cuts. I don't believe that's the right tool to solve this problem. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I will add, and I asked a question at HR Finance yesterday, and I'll ask even a more pointed question today, and that is if, and I understand the board has received an email response from individuals that serve on the library board in explaining the delays in the process. Again, I'm not justifying that or defending that, but the fact is, those delays were explained. If the board, so the question goes to the corp counsel, if the board, library board, were to remove those books outside of the process that it has spelled out, would we not be potentially creating a significant or potential liability by the library board itself, which in turn creates liability to the county?
The short answer to that would be yes. I think, based on the case law that I discussed yesterday at HR Finance, which I'm not going to go through again today, if you want to talk to me about it later, that's fine, there is liability to the library board if they make a removal decision about a book based on disagreement with the viewpoints expressed in the book, regardless of whether they follow their process. But if they don't follow their written process, that makes the liability, in my mind, much clearer. So I think the answer would be yes. The library board would be exposed in that circumstance and the county, because we fund the library.
Supervisor Zhang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to direct the question to you, but it's really towards Vice Chair McEwen. But I was just kind of curious as to the rationale behind the $69,000.
I allow the individual who's made the amendment to the amendment to try to respond. Vice Chair McEwen.
I will try to respond. The rationale behind it is, I believe with the deduction from the reserve of over 700x dollars that were in the library's reserve, when Administrator Leonard took the $350,000 from their budget, I, roughly from what I've been told, there would be 369,000 left in the budget. That would leave them 300,000 in their reserve, which I felt would be enough to, you know, to start the new budget with. And apparently, the way they've been budgeting things, they're going to have another reserve built up again for 2023. So that was the reasoning. It's, I could be off a few dollars, but it's not, like I said, they're not, they're still going to have quite a large reserve. That was my reasoning. Thank you.
Supervisor Van Cray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize for those of you who heard my comments yesterday, and if I repeat them today, sorry about that. I do appreciate the compromise to the cut that has been provided by Vice Chair McEwen. That's not lost on me. I do want to make a few comments, though. One is, to start, the most important thing to remember, I think, in my opinion, is that this is a cut to the Personnel Services line, the wage line. This is not a cut to the library's rollover fund, contingency fund, whatever you'd like to call it. The library board controls that fund, and so this is cutting that amount from the Personnel line. The library board would ultimately make the decision on to use their funds to make up that, and I can't speak for the full board what that decision would be. A cut to that line would potentially lead to layoffs, not as extreme as I mentioned yesterday, because the amount is so much less, but there's still that possibility. A couple of points that I made yesterday that I'm just going to make again is, I understand the concern for the overbudgeting or for the large fund balance and some people's opinions. If you remember, and maybe you weren't on the board then, or you weren't paying attention, in 2021, we had a pretty difficult situation with the leadership at the library. And there are, there's a director and three managers, so four people on a leadership team. After that situation played out, there was one person remaining, and that was Leah, who is now our director. She did get that position. She was not hired until, I think it was December or January, so it was the beginning of this year she came on as a director with no manager staff beneath her. She's been the last 10 months hiring that staff, getting them on board, and trying to figure out what the previous administration was doing. And I think daily, they're kind of unraveling that and uncovering the mismanagement that happened under that former leadership. And I just make that point because I think it's important to give this leadership team a chance to figure out what that other leadership team was doing and make a plan to move forward. Something I referenced yesterday was the number of computers. I think there's 70 patron computers through the library system. There's not an inventory of those computers. There's not an idea of what they need or when they need to be replaced, and that's something that the staff is working towards. If we get to next year and we see that there is still was an overbudgeting, there is a large rollover balance, there's not a plan moving forward, I think we can have this conversation again, but I think it's inappropriate now. I want to give those staff a chance to figure out how to serve this library best and be the people that are going to be great for the library and not the previous leadership that we had there. So that's a really important point I wanted to make. And I think the last one is just, this seems like retaliation against the library. The books have been brought up many times. This should be about the budget. This should be about the comments made about the overages, about the overbudgeting and the large fund balance, but instead, the comments have been made that you're upset about the books in the library, the process, and that sounds like retaliation to me. It's unethical, in my opinion, to retaliate against the library for a choice or a process, a speed that you didn't like. And we, as a board, have heard from dozens and dozens of community members about their support for the library, despite, we've heard people say, "Those books aren't for me. I don't like that for my family, but I support the library and I want to see the library funded." And I think that's incredibly important to hear and be reminded that we serve the constituents. And when we're hearing from that many, that this is an important place for them and an important place for our community, we need to respect that, and I'm asking to not support any cuts, further cuts, the administrator already made a cut, any further cuts to this library budget, and let this, let this next year happen and let the library staff get on their feet. Thank you.
Supervisor Hardinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Administrator, just for my clarification, you already cut $350,000 out of the upcoming budget for the library, yes?
Correct. I cut $350,000 from their submission. It's not a $350,000 cut from the budget that was, that they received in 2022, but it was a $350,000 reduction from their 2023 proposed budget.
Okay, so already in the budget, we're subtracting $350,000 from what they would be receiving in 2023?
From what they requested to receive in 2023.
From what they requested. So Supervisor Dickinson's request is to basically add another $350,000 on top of that $350,000?
365.
369.
But the amendment to the amendment that we're debating correctly right now is, the reduction would be moved to 69,000 instead of the 365.
Okay, so the recommendation came from the administrator to reduce it by $350,000 from their asking in 2023?
Correct, and that was done when the administrator developed his budget.
Got it, okay. And now Vice Chair McEwen is asking that we just drop that down from 350,000 to 69,000?
No, this is another 69,000 on top of the 350 that the library asked for. So the library asked for a number.
Yep.
The administrator reduced that and presented the budget to the HR Finance Committee.
Okay.
The HR Finance Committee took the budget and made some adjustments to that, bought the budget to this board. That already has that 350 reduction in it.
Okay.
Supervisor Dickinson's request is to reduce it another 369,000.
Right, okay.
And then Supervisor McEwen has offered an amendment to the amendment to now reduce that 365 to 69.
Okay.
Did I make it clear?
No, I got it now. Yeah, I don't think I was saying it right.
Sorry.
So there is a surplus, though, from previous years from the library board, based off of what Supervisor Dickinson said, anywhere between 90 to a couple hundred thousand dollars in surplus continually over the last five years. Is that correct?
I would say that that's a correct characterization. But the library director and the library board and the administrator has requested that they provide a five-year plan on how they're going to utilize those funds for small CIP projects. It's also been described that they provide and have to provide a book sorter that's over $90,000 in replacement costs and 70-some computers and come up with a timeline as far as replacements of those. And that would be coming out of that surplus.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I guess my second point was the corporate counsel. And yes, it does feel like this is a, we're penalizing them for not responding to the public outcry that has been going on for months regarding these books. I don't honestly can say I can completely agree with that as how that's being handled. But at the same time, I definitely don't agree with how long it's taken for that process to take place. So I, we say it's liability to skip the process that we have, but we also have been in this room when they said they have pulled books before during the process while they were reviewing them. Unless I'm misremembering that, but there was at least one book that they pulled in the process while they were doing reviews. I also would like to say that there is a liability that we're having by not responding to the public. And I don't, I know that the library falls under some statute that we can't sue them or a parent can't sue them for something that's in the library. I understand that. I don't agree with that at all. But I, the process is taking a lot longer, I think, than a lot of people really appreciate. And I think there's probably better ways to go about it. I would agree with Vice Chair McEwen's 69,000 to leave something in that reserve, but I am glad that discussions have been made, that they're going to look forward in that plan and adjust their budget so they don't continually have these overages. So I will, I will vote to support Vice Chair McEwen. But I also don't agree with, you know, what's happening with the library board and how long it's taking for them to respond.
Supervisor Silver.
Thank you, Chairman Gibbs. I have a question on the, on the budget. There is seven or nine outline libraries besides the main library in Wausau. Are they under one budget, or does each library have its own budget?
There is one budget for the library system in Marathon County that includes the satellite, our rural libraries, such as the Stratford Library, the Marathon Library, the Athens Library, and the Hatley Library. Now, there's also...
A follow-up. Do, do we know which, which libraries are busy, which libraries are not? What day they have no customers? What day they have a lot of customers? Is, is that information available?
That would be information that the library board probably has, but it's not something that we were apprised to, to try to get information for tonight for this board.
Okay. And the third and final question are, there's towns and townships in Marathon County that do not belong to the Marathon County Library. How did that come about? And how much money is being left on the table by letting them spend their money outside Marathon County? I know one's cost is $111,000, and that's the town of McMillan. They pay that to Marshfield.
We've got the deputy corp coun, or deputy administrator. He is familiar a little bit with the library system and the funding and, and how municipalities can elect to choose different. I got into that discussion this morning.
Yeah, so real briefly, when you move to create the library system like you have in Marathon County, there are, say, a city or village could opt out of it by running their own library. Once you have that system, then you can have the branches throughout. And your example of the town of McMillan, I think it was in 2004, the town agreed with Marshfield to set up a relationship so that they would opt out of the Marathon County system, and then they would provide funding to the Marshfield Library based on usage. And there's a statutory formula for how you calculate how much money you are supposed to pay. Outside of the system, there's that statutory requirement for the county to pay, I think, 70% of the cost. And then also, there's a weird wrinkle in there where if you're in a system, then your citizens, your residents can go anywhere in the state and use any library, and there's no charge back. But if you weren't in a system, then you were, and say you were in Tom McMillan, and you didn't have that relationship, but you had a lot of people going to the Marshfield Library, Marshfield could track that and then make the appeal back to the county to say, hey, we had 100 people in a town of McMillan, they checked out 1,000 books based on a formula, you owe us X dollars. And so then the county would have to issue them a check. And so by creating this system, you tax everybody for the, in the county for the library system who's in it, who hasn't opted out, like Tom McMillan. And then that covers everything for the system itself. And it, it eliminates that sort of payment outside to other counties, to an adjacent county where people are using other libraries outside of the county's system.
That would be the same way, like Abbotsford doesn't belong to our system. Colby doesn't belong to our system. And there's one more township that doesn't.
Marshfield.
Right, the city of Marshfield does not belong to our system.
Correct. I mean, there's joint, you can do joint library agreements. The statute gives a few different options for how a municipality might choose to opt in or out. And that, those conversations often happen when a library system is being contemplated. So I imagine back when the Marathon County system was initially put together, if it was, if a city or a village said, well, we want to have our own library, then they would fund it their own way outside of the system. And then the system would move forward from there. But for like McMillan, they negotiated a separate agreement through statute and that same formula to then say, we want to, we want to pay Marshfield Library for our people to go and use that.
Okay, okay. Is there, is there any other townships or cities that, that use Marathon County libraries that aren't in Marathon County? Like, what's happening?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting because sometimes when you have this, when you have counties that maybe are in a system and, and some other people go to the adjacent county, there can be sort of, I won't call it conflict, but disagree, people will say, well, your people are coming to use our, use our library. But, sorry, could you repeat the question again? I'm...
Are there, are there, are there towns or, or villages outside?
Can I call a point of order? I'm sorry for interrupting, but this does not seem to remain to the budget unless you're getting to a point of the budget.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm getting to the point is that other people are using, if other people are using our library, are we, do we have an income from that? And if McMillan is 111,000, the city of Marshfield is more than that, Abbotsford and Colby, we're, I mean, we're pushing five, six, 700,000 that's being paid to somebody else.
It's reciprocal in a sense that, and I don't want to speak for every library in the state.
It is germane. I apologize. Monsieur Van Cray, your question, point of order, it's germane at this point. If it does go much further afield, I will, I will rule it out of order.
I can speak with you later.
I'm good. Thank you.
Supervisor Dickinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing, the 69,000, if you look at that, it actually aligns then the cash reserve, if the cash reserve is used, to the targeted amount of cash reserve of the library of $300,000. I think that was something that was discussed. Now, I, in my, in this, you know, in, in this, in my amendment, but in, which is the same here except for a dollar amount and the, the line adjustments, the intent isn't to, the intent is to align with the administrators' thoughts that using the, the, it would be my intent that the fund balance, in essence, would be used to be able to mitigate, or they simply would have reduced costs. And so Supervisor Baker had mentioned in the meeting yesterday, and we look at some of our budget numbers, they have been under budget by several hundred thousand dollars, kind of on average. So there is the money within the budget that they're going to be getting to cover that. So I don't want to, it's not like they're tight, they're tight, they're tight, and here's this 69,000, and it's going to cause something. I think it is manageable based upon the number, you know, of a few hundred thousand dollars. Supervisor Baker had mentioned 255,000 yesterday. Additionally, you know, I want to apologize a little bit because I got off track, and I had spoken with Supervisor Van Cray earlier today. And I got, I apologize for getting a little off track with the second two points. My focus is primarily on the budget. But the only reason this ever came up is because of the issue that they were going through. So in adjusting the budget, I think we're just helping them get aligned to where they need to be. I wouldn't view this as a punishment upon them for their process. I realize they're moving through the process, and I'm, it's fast or slow or however it is. But the perception in the community in that regard is that it, it wasn't being addressed, is what they felt. And, you know, perceptions are real. In the military, when I was in the Air Force, they were adamant that you might not think it's sexual harassment, what you said, but perception is reality. So, so the perception exists, and that's where I wanted to get that comment, the perception exists that there's some stuff, you know, that maybe that process could have been improved. And that's really all my comment on that. And as far as the books, you know, there's a lot of talk about the removal. My amendment is not to pressure, this amendment is not to pressure any removal of these books. It is not to pressure any process to be, you know, anything to be done outside of the process at all, at all. So that should be clear. So if there's ever this case of liability, they can get this recording and say the person who put it forth is telling you clearly that is not where I'm at whatsoever. The question becomes ultimately with, with that part of the discussion is, why are, you know, the books are there in the first place. So it's not really about, there's the removal conversation, but there's also the conversation of the books have been allowed to be in in the first place, which is concerning. But I, and the last thing I'll say is, I support the 69,000 amendment. I appreciate it. The 365 is, was a number, and it is what it is, but I, I am more comfortable with the 69,000. Thank you.
Vice Chair McEwen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the, the comments from Supervisor Van, Van Cray on the process that they're, they're trying to go through. I guess, and my intent, again, I agree with Supervisor Dickinson. I'm not making this request because of the situation with the books. I am doing it because of the budget issues that I believe they have at the library, and I hope that they, they do get them straightened out with a new director and, and I don't, this is actually a new board also. So I'm not, I'm not doing this, but I do think that the 69,000, it does not have to come out of, I don't want anybody to get laid off. I'm sure that would be, if the library board chooses to do that, that's, that's up to them. But I think they could spread this 69,000 across, you know, the rest of the total budget. But that's totally up to the library board. So like I said, I, I, I hope, like I said, that, you know, people support this resolution. And I don't know if I can call the question because it's my motion, but I call the question. Thank you.
Is there objection to the question being called? Is there any objection to question being called? Saying none, we have five remaining people in the queue. They will be allowed to address the board, and then we'll proceed with a vote on the question being called. Supervisor Zhang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions and then a comment. The first question is directed towards Administrator Leonard here. In your message, you stated that you directed all departments to reduce their non-payroll operating levy budgets by 2%. Is that including the library, Department of Library, the library as well, too?
I sent the same letter to all department heads, so yes, the library did receive it.
So then on top of that, you also are adding the $350,000 reduction as well, correct?
Correct.
So in a sense here, there, there's 350,000 plus the 2% that were added on as well. And then in your message, you also stated that the surplus that is resulting approximately $219,000 is because of attrition and vacancy and sound financial management. So in a sense here, it's not, it's not really the fact that they're overbudgeting, but rather the fact that there's more, there's vacancy and then savings from that. Is that correct?
I'll defer to the library board. This is what I'll, I'll say about my relationship and working with Leah, is I think she is, as Supervisor Van Cray referenced, doing a sound job. They had a great many vacancies, again, as alluded to by Supervisor Van Cray, and particularly over the last couple of years. You may recall that the libraries, like many entities where there were, that would otherwise allow individuals to come and go pre-pandemic. The pandemic affected them immensely, and they did hold positions open. They didn't lay people off, but they did hold people open, and when people left or retired, they, they kept those open. And I, I have found them to be very responsive. They work well with the administration and our other departments.
And then my comment I'm going to have is, and I say this in the utmost respect, is I feel, I feel we're, I feel that we are punishing them for being, for having vacancies and being financially, and being sound financially managing their, you know, their library in a sound manner, or being very fiscally responsive, responsible. So I'm kind of curious if we were to, if any other departments were to do the same, would we be punishing them, or not, not punishing them, but reducing their budget in the same way as well, too? So I'm still trying to grasp the idea of the reducing their budget because of their surplus, but their surplus occurred because of the fact that they had vacancies and being financially, fiscally responsive. So just want to add that comment. Thank you.
I don't believe there was a question in that. I don't believe there was a question in that last portion.
No question.
Thank you. Okay. Supervisor Van Cray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I will, I will comment that I attempted to make the point, but perhaps I wasn't clear enough when I said that there was a leadership team of four, and then there was only a leadership team of one. So that meant there were three leaders that their salaries were no longer needed because those people didn't exist anymore. So yes, there is an, an overage due to staff not being there. Just a couple other points that I didn't make before. The library actually decreased their operating budget by 2.3%. So while you do see an increase in the overall budget that is due to this board's direction on the wage compensation study and the increase in wages for staff, but the operating budget was reduced by 2.3%. And then I just, I want to make an ironic comment that perception is reality. So if we're talking about that, there's a perception that this is punishing the library for the book situation. Thank you.
Supervisor Robinson.
And I, I agree with both Supervisors Zhang and Van Cray relative to how it's being interpreted. But the, the problem with the library is that they're unique in the state statutes. And unlike any other department, when the library has a surplus, it stays with the library instead of going into the county's fund balance. And what we have done is taken them out of the small KIP process and said, use that to fund your own KIP. So they don't come to us for the computers and the other things. They, they fund that internally. As part of the administrative work plan, and as he stated in, in his budget message and in his comments, he's working on trying to develop a long-term solution on how to address those capital improve, those improvement projects. And I think that's worthwhile. Years ago, Supervisor, former Supervisor Day and I were concerned about the library. At that time, there was a maintenance of effort requirement. We couldn't cut the library's budget. That law has changed on a state level, and we now have some discretion relative to the budgeting. But I think we need, you know, I think that this is viewed, and, you know, all of the contacts that I've had from my constituents, is this is viewed as retaliation by this board for those cuts. I think we need to give the administrator the opportunity to work with the new administration at the library to develop a long-term capital plan, and then we can start looking at cuts and bringing them in line. But we have increased their costs for personnel services and others, and I don't support the 69,000 or the 365,000 cut.
Supervisor Baker.
Thank you. So our levy this year, our levy that is in our budget is $3,389,685. So if we take out... If we take out 69,000, I believe, would be 300, $3,320,000. Last year, the actual expenditures, if I read them correctly, were 3.1 million. And this year, if we extrapolate for the average of the first 10 months for the next two months, it would again be about 3.1 million. And that's the best data that I have. I asked if anyone did correct me, and I didn't hear back that that was incorrect. So, and I understand that we're increasing salaries and that we are probably short people. So I'm not minimizing that, but basically my point is, is that regardless of which of the two amendments we have, I don't believe that based on what we have currently have, we would be cutting people, that we would need to cut people to meet, to meet that lowering of funding. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor, Vice Chairman Keen was the last one that was on the queue when question was called. So Vice Chairman Keen.
I know, I was put back on there. I was already on there, so.
All right. So we are now at the point where question has been called. Again, a two-thirds majority vote. Does end debate on the amendment to the amendment. Again, we are at an amendment to the amendment, and we are at 69, the, the amendment to the amendment says we will reduce the library budget by 69,000 instead of the 365 as originally reported in the amendment. And this vote is to just end debate. Is everyone clear? We will proceed to vote on ending debate. Supervisor Shifinski, please vote. And we'll proceed, and we, debate is ended, and we now will vote on the motion to amend the amendment. And that amendment, that a vote now will be to substitute the 69,000 in the decrease in expenditure for the 2023 Library Department by subtracting a sum of 69,000 from category 101-665-910 Personnel Services from page 105. Everybody clear? A positive, a yes vote supports the amendment to the amendment. We'll proceed to vote. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. Now, any further debate on the amendment as amended? Any further discussion? Supervisor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted it to be known that any amount of cuts are going to impact really the rural libraries. And I, I say that with knowing that my district holds the main branch here in Wausau. But for the most part, the main branch is going to be okay. I mean, it's, it's still going to weather some cuts, and it's still going to face some difficulties with its cuts, but it's not facing closures, and it's not facing laying off half its staff. I know this was said yesterday, but a lot of those rural branches run on two part-time staffers. So a reduction in the personnel budget means that one of those staffers might get laid off, which means the library was going to have to cut its hours or close entirely because of a lack of staff. If one of, if they have to lay off one of them and the other one gets sick, then how many days is that library going to have to be closed? So, and, and I want it to be known that that is branches in Spencer, Mozzany, Marathon City, Edgar, Stratford, and Athens. Those are all the ones that are looking at the closures. They are all going to weather these cuts. The other part of this is the reduction in the fund balance. If the library board does decide to use the fund balance to make up for any of these cuts, it's also going to be the rural branches that are going to hurt as well, because in talking with the library director, one of the things that they need to use the fund balance for is for a refresh in branch equipment specifically at these rural libraries. These are the libraries that didn't get upgrades in shelving and furniture. They've kind of made do throughout the couple of years. It also has to be known that these libraries in these communities are much more than just books. These, this is the internet for a lot of these communities. It's copy machines, it's documents. I know that because my mom used the Athens branch in order to do her taxes. She got help from the staff there in order to do that, to make copies of a specific document that she needed. So with the reduction, it could really hurt these communities because that's an example of, that's just one example of what these branches are. And like I said, I understand the irony of a supervisor who represents downtown Wausau needing to advocate for rural libraries, but I, I know I've said this many times before, but I've grown up in Athens, and I, I want to also advocate for all of Marathon County. My last point that I'll make is, speaking of the right tool, which was mentioned before, I feel like we are fixing a hole in the wall with a sledgehammer right now. So I will ask that we not support this amendment and keep our libraries fully funded. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Keen.
I believe we, we, I call the question?
Well, the question was called on the amendment to the amendment. Now we're back to the amendment as amended. So question could be called again if that's your desire.
Yes, I wish to call the question again. Thank you.
Is there an objection to question being called? Seeing no objection, the remaining five individuals in the queue will be allowed to speak. Supervisor Hardinger is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would just like to respond by, a couple supervisors making note in here that, you know, the rural communities and the rural libraries in the outlined districts, because I've, I've received emails and, and I've, I've been talking to people too, and part of the threat was if we cut funding in any way, shape, or form, they were basically going to punish the rural communities by going after their libraries rather than making any adjustments here, which I thought was politics, you know. But, I mean, we're, we're sitting here talking about a surplus for the last five years, every year, and tens of thousands of dollars. And now we're saying we're going to cut it by possibly 69,000 or 2% on top of 69,000, or whatever it is, when there's, there's been a surplus. There's been a surplus. It's not like they're, they're operating on a shoestring budget here, and all of a sudden we're slapping them on it. So I, I, I was really upset when I, when I got news that certain people would, you know, go after basically the rural community and try to affect this vote that way. So I would just like to make that publicly, that they have the money to keep those rural communities going. They're not operating on a shoestring budget. I understand there's things that need to happen. I understand that there, there's a list of things that they need to update. But go to a bookstore, any bookstore anywhere, it's rundown, it's horrible. Our library is beautiful in comparison. Yes, there's things that need to happen there, but there, these aren't bad facilities. We're doing pretty good. And there's a lot of things there that people use for resources. So I really hope that the library board or anybody else that has anything to do with it doesn't take this as an opportunity to come after the rural areas and then blame us on this board for making this vote. And it's just, I have to say it. So, thank you.
Next, we have Supervisor Longenhahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Originally, I was going to withdraw my comment, but I'm going to make one comment in regards to the budget process as a whole for tonight. We're going on four and a half hours here. I would just encourage everybody here to maintain decorum. We have done a very good job thus far, but I just want to make sure that we continue to treat each other with respect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We will move on. Supervisor Vensky next.
I withdraw my comment.
Thank you. Supervisor Sandalsky.
So if the 69,000 don't pass, does it go back to the original?
No, because the amendment to the amendment has been amended.
Okay, thank you.
If that makes sense. We're getting to all understand amendments to the amendments. Supervisor Leahy.
Thank you. I was just going to call the question if no one else did. So I guess I, I guess I withdraw my comment as well. Thank you.
All right. Question's been called. We will proceed to vote on the question and ending debate on the amended. So again, a yes vote ends debate with the two-thirds majority. Supervisor Lamont, I'm waiting on your vote. I'm assuming you haven't fallen asleep and you're still waiting for the internet.
Yes. I, I vote yes.
Thank you. I'll take your vote as an aye, and we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. And we will now, we will now vote on the amendment as amended. So now we are at the point where we are, a yes vote will approve the $69,000 cut to the library budget, and a no vote will not cut the 69,000 from the library budget. Is everyone clear on what we're voting on? All right, we will proceed to vote. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. And we're now back to the tax resolution, Budget and Property Tax Levy Resolution 65-22 as amended. We have Supervisor Zhang with a request to speak.
I'm going to call the question.
Is there objection to question being called? Is there any objection to question being called?
Yes.
There's an objection. Is there a second to the question being called? It's seconded by Supervisor Van Cray. No one was... Okay, Supervisor Vensky and Supervisor Lamont are in the queue. Supervisor Vensky.
I withdraw my question.
Thank you. Supervisor Lamont.
I move Amendment 18.
That is not acceptable at this time. That motion is out of order. We are at a point where question has been called, so the, it's a preferential motion, and we've had a second, and so I must take that in order.
I'm waiting on that.
Pardon me?
Will I stay in the queue then for, if it passes?
No.
Okay.
Okay. We are then to the point again of ending debate on the tax, property tax levy resolution, Resolution 65-22 as amended. A yes vote ends debate and, and moves forward to voting on the resolution as amended to the, this point. So again, a yes vote ends debate, a no vote will, will continue. Are we ready to vote? Is everybody clear? And Supervisor Lamont, could you declare your vote?
Yep.
You're voting yes to end debate. Okay?
No, I voted no.
I've got your vote, I've got your vote through, thank you, through the system. Thank you. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. Debate is ended on the Budget and Property Tax Resolution, and so we now have a, we will proceed to vote, but prior to taking a vote, I'm going to request a five-minute recess so that the finance director, or let's make it a 10-minute.
I need to leave like now, so if you do that, I won't be voting.
I, I totally understand, but I do have to get the resolution accurate after the amendments that have been made, and I don't have an accurate budget tax resolution for our, for this county, and I have to take a 10-minute recess. We are, stand in recess for 10 minutes. Let's make it five minutes. All right. Better yet, the administrator said two and a half minutes is what he needed.